Nineteen. I'm five.
Well, in that case, it's five o'clock. It is five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. See if I can. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Kennedy is absent.
Now would be the time for public comments. We have no cards. There isn't anyone in the audience, so I'm going to save reading that complete thing until the seven o'clock meeting and go directly to attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. There are five closed session items, I believe, and I'll check with the city manager that items A and C are no longer required this evening.
That is correct.
So we have essentially three closed session items, two of which pertain to the same matter. It's anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.91 is on behalf of the airport authority, but the same matter also appears on the agenda for the city council. And it's the possible anticipated litigation with respect to written communications received from Robert Landwear. The other item is closed session on anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9, and that is also the possible anticipated litigation pertaining to the Nutro facility. More information is provided on the agenda. To the extent there was reportable action, we will report that either at the close of the closed session or immediately proceed in the seven o'clock meeting.
At that, we will adjourn into closed session at 5:01. We're counting down the seconds. I'm calling a special meeting of the city council to order. This is a special meeting of the city council and its boards. This is the City of Victorville, the city council setting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and Victorville Housing Trust. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy's absence is noted. Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. At this time, we're going to have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The -- I had a card on who was giving that. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. Who's giving the invocation? Oh, here it is. I gotta look at the right sheet. Dr. Jesse Giddens, pastor from Destiny Christian Center. And then, please remain standing. Welcome, Pastor. And the pledge of allegiance by Sam, our police chief Sam LaShia.
Let us pray. Gracious God and awesome Father, tonight, once again, we come to you, acknowledging you even at the very beginning of this meeting. We thank you, Father, that we are in a city and a country where we can still pray before business meetings and city meetings and acknowledge you. Your word tells us when we acknowledge you, you will direct our paths. And so, Father, tonight, we thank you for each and every city council meeting leader. We thank you for our city officials. We thank you for our council members, our mayor, our mayor Protem, our city manager, our city attorney. We thank you for all those who do give their lives for this public service, for the betterment of this city and for this cause. We lift up this meeting to you, asking just that you would guide, lead, and direct. Even before we begin, we ask for wisdom and insight to make decisions that would be better and not hurtful. We ask, Father, that you would cause your choices blessings to be upon this city as we move forward, God, out of economic distress into economic progress and advancement. We ask you, Father, as we remember this week, our Memorial Day celebration, our servicemen and women who serve our country all over this world, God, even at this time, we just thank you for continual protection. And we remember and are thankful for those who've given their lives or any part of their service for us. And then, Father, we pray, God, for those who continually do serve in public office, not just public office, but public positions, our fire department, our police officers, our sheriffs, highway patrol, every part, God, that comes to make up what we do and our safety in which we enjoy so much. We just thank you for all of these things and ask your blessings as we continue tonight. It's in the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. We have -- I'm going to come down front. I'm going to bring my cheat sheet with me, but I'm going to tell you the presentations that we have before I leave my seat. The first presentation is a recognition for volunteers and sponsors for Community Cleanup Day. Dana Armstrong will meet me down front when I come down. The second presentation, Catherine Abbott, Victor Valley College. It's entitled Campaign for Classes. And the third presentation, Nancy Jackson from Southern California Edison. So if Dana, if you'd meet me, and I assume that she has the -- okay, she has those. Okay, thank you. Doing testing? There we are. And so, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have noticed some other people are joining us at the front. These are representatives from our various Community Cleanup Day sponsors, as well as team leaders, that participated in our most recent Community Cleanup Day. We're here tonight to give an update on the Community Cleanup Day and to recognize our event volunteers and sponsors. The Victorville Community Cleanup Day began in October 2007 as a joint project of the Victorville Chamber of Commerce and the City of Victorville. In April of last year, due to budget issues and staffing concerns, the chamber asked the city to take sole responsibility for coordinating the event, although the chamber remains very involved with us as being a sponsor and promoting the event today. The event is held twice a year in April and October. Community organizations, schools, youth and church groups, and businesses recruit volunteers and put together teams for the event. Since the event started in 2007, over 6,000 volunteers have picked up more than 60 tons of litter from Victorville road sides, which is just unbelievable. The April 2013 event was one of our best ones ever, with 32 teams, almost 800 volunteers, and 12 event sponsors. At this time, I would like to acknowledge our event sponsors. As I read your name and organization, please just wave hello so people can see who's here. Marcy Agayo from Alaska USA Federal Credit Union, Naka Soon from American Organics, Tina Howard from Desert Valley Medical Group, Michelle Spears from Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce, Angie Callahan from the Daily Press, Brad Harris from Southwest Gas. And we also had Steve Bradshaw. I think he was, he had an issue he was addressing from Victorville Disposal in Burt Tech. He was going to try to be here tonight. And also Rick Hampton from Serve Pro of Victorville Adelanto, Victor Valley. Our other sponsors were Valley Sporting Goods, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, Plastapack, and Carol Yule of Sheer Realty, who has been a longtime supporter as well. I would now like to recognize our team leaders, and I tried to catch everybody out in the lobby, and hopefully I did. We have Kelly Kohler from Westbound Communications and the Mojave River Watershed Group. She should be here. There she is. We have Grant Clokeyed from the Clokeyed Family and Friends, Ruby Welch from the National Council of Negro Women, Candy Ramirez from Discovery School of the Arts. There we go. And Vicki Bell from Morgan Kincaid Elementary School. And is, did I miss, did I get everybody? Okay, great. I'm doing okay. And now, if there are other volunteers that are out in the audience, I'd like you to stand as well. I know we had some people from Galileo Academy. Great, thank you. And all told, we had over 800 people sign up, so this is just a sampling of the people that were involved. The mayor, I'm going to give this to you, and we're going to take a photograph after I'm done talking in about 30 seconds. We have a certificate of appreciation made out to, in this case, the Chamber of Commerce, but we will have one for each sponsor and for each team, and we'll be getting that to you after the meeting. And on behalf of the City of Victorville, I would like to thank our sponsors, our team leaders, our volunteers. The Victorville Community Cleanup Day is a great example of civic pride and involvement by Victorville residents, businesses, and organizations. The event is a success because of your support and participation. Thank you for building the Victorville community. Thank you very much.
I was, I was given a list of some of the places that the volunteer workers would be in, so I went out to visit each of the sites, and I ran into six or eight or more sites that I didn't know about. And I was amazed at how much was being, how much garbage and paper products and things were being picked up, the number of people. And so, I, you know, it's a great pleasure, on behalf of the city council, to thank everyone that was involved in this. You did wonderful. You did great. We need more volunteers to do things like that. I can tell you, the following day, this community looked a lot better. So thank you very, very much from the City of Victorville. Again, thank you very much, all of you. For the next two presentations, I'm not sure I need to be down here. I'm going to go back to my seat. But is Catherine Abbott here?
I'm actually not Catherine Abbott. Most of you know that. My name is Ginger Ontiveros. I'm the executive director of the Victor Valley College Foundation. I believe that we have a PowerPoint. This is the first time I have there. It is presented in this room, so I'm hoping that I can figure out how to work the slides here and make them go along with what we're doing. However, I'm here, we're here basically to talk with you about an initiative that we have going on right now at the foundation, just to educate you about our efforts and to encourage you, I hope, to help advocate for us as well. Before I do that, I want to thank you all for your demonstrated support of education. The City of Victorville and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority have been amazing partners over the years, making sure that we are able to meet the community's need for education and training. And with that, I know you know the value of education. You know that an educated community is a safer community, that education and economic prosperity go hand in hand, that our workforce, being better trained, attracts more and better employers to the region. And so, we are very pleased to be a part of helping to bring those kinds of solutions to the Victor Valley. There are a lot of people in this room, as we were looking around the audience, who have also stepped up to give a lot of support to the college. Desert Valley Hospital, for example. The Daily Press has been a big supporter as well. And then specifically for this campaign, we've received some significant support and commitments from Southern California Edison and Southwest Gas, and personal contributions from people like Michelle Spears and others in the room. And so, we want to acknowledge that as we reach in to talk with you about this particular campaign. Now Kathy and I spend a lot of time in the community, talking to members and stakeholders about the college and about education. And the, one of the most common things that we're asked is how can someone I know get a class? My kid has been on a waitlist. My neighbor can't get into a class. My nephew is being stalled. And it is because of this that we established the Campaign for Classes. The challenge that the college has in facing the need of the community is really caused by the funding formula for community colleges. It's not directly related to the number of people who want to take classes. In fact, it's quite different than that. Our funding formula is based on how much money the state has. And we know, over the past few years, that has been a substantial challenge. I'm going to see if this goes. No, no. Okay, it's not moving. Oh, there it is. In any case, the State of California funds us per full-time student. So what's happened over the last several years with the economic downturn in the economy is that $800 million has been cut from California community colleges. That's a huge hit for our colleges statewide. Now Victor Valley College serves about 9,000 students, full-time students. That's not because that's the only number that want to attend. There's a lot more students in this community who would come forward to take classes at the college if they were available. In fact, in the spring of 2013, 7,667 students found themselves on maxed-out waitlists and not able to get a class that they needed for their education. Now, those aren't all full-time students, because, you know, one student might be on more than one waitlist, but it represents thousands of people whose educations are being stalled and who are potentially being discouraged from continuing their education. It's delaying their educations up to two years. You know, they're finding that they can't get a class this semester, so they have to wait till next semester, and they can't get that class next semester, so now they are a year in before they finally get the one class that they needed in order to progress. Some students get frustrated and they drop out, and we think that's just unacceptable. Part of the reason for that is that Victor Valley College, over the last four years, has seen an 18 percent decrease in the amount of funding that the state provides to us. And again, our funding isn't provided based on the number of students who need classes or want classes. It's based on the economics of the state. And so, that has meant a significant reduction in the available classes that we can make available to our community. We definitely think that that is a big reason why we have a lot of people saying, "I can't get classes. How do I get the class that I need, the math class that I need?" We're not talking about the exotic classes that maybe only a few people want and can't be offered very often. We're talking about core classes, math and English and science, things that every student needs in order to get their degree or to transfer to a university. You know, we really, really believe that, you know, this is not something that we, as a community, need to be a victim of. You know, over the weekend, there was a letter to the editor, I know there've been a few, where Tony Penna, who has been a supporter of the college for many years, said in, as part of his letter, "As goes the college, so goes the valley." And I think that's absolutely true. So our job at the foundation is to find ways to encourage the community to support the college in its quest to expand educational opportunities to the valley. And we've come up with a really creative, comprehensive, easy opportunity for people to support our effort to add 50 additional classes to the college schedule next year. Now, this is where you get to see Kathy Abbott, because she's going to come up here and talk with you about the various elements of the Campaign for Classes and hopefully get you excited about some of those and educate the population of Victorville as well. So Kathy, I'm turning it over to you.
Good evening. This is the real Catherine Abbott standing up. So as Ginger mentioned, let me just get used to this system here. We have established the Campaign for Classes. We are turning frustration into graduation, as Ginger mentioned just a few minutes ago. The one thing that we are really trying to avoid here is allowing our students to drop out of school because they can't get the classes that they need in a timely matter. Their educations become more expensive, and they become more discouraged as a result. How are we doing this? We've set a very aggressive goal for ourselves, $250,000 in five weeks. And this begins on May 1st, began on May 1st, which is May Day, until graduation, which is June 7th, which is next Friday. This will allow Victor Valley College to add 50 new classes to the 2013 fall and 2014 spring schedules. We'll be able to have a very measurable outcome, which is 1,500 students. And again, as Ginger mentioned, it's those important math, science, English, history, those transferable classes that students have to have in order to go on to the university The centerpiece of our campaign, we're calling this a very crazy idea, is called Auto Occupado. We have formed an amazing partnership with the Valley High Auto Group, and they have, when we met with them and we told them about what it is that we wanted to do to help our students, they were on board 150 percent, and they have come up with some amazing ideas. But as I mentioned, the centerpiece, Auto Occupado, we have five of their vehicles parked on our campus, and each week, there is a vehicle that we call the Spotlight Vehicle. In that vehicle, since May 1st, we have had either a student, a staff, an administrator, a faculty, or a volunteer from the community sitting inside that car 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It will be a total of 37 days and a total of 888 hours. Today, we are on day 28. Hold on, I need to get to my little cheat sheet here, because Ginger wrote this down for me. 672 hours, and we only have 216 to go. This has been amazingly complicated to make sure that there is a butt in the seat from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the morning the next day. We've had to juggle a lot of schedules, but we have had a lot of support and a lot of people from the community who have come out and spent their day inside this vehicle, kind of as a positive sit-in, a positive demonstration to Sacramento, that, you know, we're not going to be a victim to your state budget cuts. Instead, we're going to find very creative and out-of-the-box solutions to focus on our number-one priority at the college, which is our students. And I just want to mention one other thing. Imagine sitting, buying a new car, and there's a gas shortage. You're sitting idle. It's kind of the same thing with our students. There's a class shortage. They too are sitting idle. Now, if you're so inclined and you want to watch all the action of Auto Occupado, we have a webcam. You can go on webcamone.vvc.edu, and I can promise you, it's not as exciting as it looks, but it really is very cool. So the other thing that we did, because this is the community's college, and we are very proud that Victor Valley Community College is in the City of Victorville, is we set up a text-to-give program. That text-to-give program is a simple donation on your cellphone bill. You just create a message to the number 20222. Our code word is GIVETOVVC, and then your carrier is going to ask you to reply yes, to make sure that you want to make that $10 donation. So if you are all inclined while you're watching my presentation, you can take out your cellphones and make a $10 donation. But you can text anywhere. You can text inside a car. You can text on a beach, in a famous Mai Tai bar, or in a kayak in Hawaii. That's Frank Robinson texting during one of our executive board meetings, and then some other students who were also taking out their cellphones and texting to give.
Kathy, I just texted $10.
Thank you very much. Some of the other kind of creative marketing ideas that we've come up with is to, I don't know how many of you go into a restaurant, but I always see people on their cellphones at restaurants. So we put some table tents in some local restaurants around the community, which kind of gives them a little story from a student who has had issues with getting the classes that they need and, you know, getting through what should be a two-year community college for some is turning into four years. So that kind of explains the story a little bit, and then, you know, actually ask them to do a text-to-give while you're sitting having dinner. Some of the advertising, we really wanted this to be something that the entire community Some of the advertising, we really wanted this to be something that the entire community was talking about. So we really went all out, and a lot of it is thanks to Valley High as our partner who stepped up and, you know, helped us really promote this marketing. We have billboards, we have radio advertising, we're advertising through the newspaper, social media, of course, and Doug, as you saw earlier at Rotary today, I did have my campaign t-shirt on. You may have seen some of the billboards on the 15 freeway between Bear Valley and Hesperia Road. That explains, what? Okay. Did I say, I'm sorry, Main Street. So the one on the left is the northbound at Bear Valley, and then the one on the right is on the east side of the freeway, just before Main Street. Y102 and all of El Dorado broadcasters have really embraced this campaign. They're very excited about it, they really want it to work, and so they are promoting the campaign left and right. They are going to be joining us on June 4th or June 5th to sit inside the vehicle. So all of the DJs will be inside the vehicle during the entire day. Again, thank you to the Daily Press. We have our own Facebook page, VVC Campaign. We are doing Twitter, and we are tweeting. And we also have Instagram, which I have no clue how to use, but somewhere out there, I guess we do do some Instagramming. There's the t-shirt that we mentioned. We have a lot of individuals wearing this around the campus. And then also on the Student Activity Center, we have wrapped every single door so that every student that walks in and out of every single exit and every single entrance of the Student Activity Center is aware of why we were doing this. You know, although those five vehicles are sitting on campus 24 hours a day, a lot of them still really don't understand, they think that maybe there's a free car. Well, it's not. It's Valley High showing their support for what really is considered a basic need. Where's our progress? Well, to date, we have raised $95,000, which will allow VVC to add 19 classes to the schedule. We're working with a lot of other corporate and community partners to bring in some extra funding and also that Text2Give program. So I want to thank you all for having us this evening, and I hope if you have any more questions about Campaign for Classes, that you'll feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. So happy to be here tonight, and I'm going to try to bring a lot of issues and things before you in a matter of 10 minutes or less. And first of all, Edison does support the Victor Valley College Campaign for Classes, so a very proud supporter of that. While my presentation, I suppose, is being loaded, let me just give you a few things that are going on with Southern California Edison. We are investing 20, excuse me, $2 billion in infrastructure replacement this year and next year, and what that means for all of our service territory is that the infrastructure that was in the ground or built in the '40s is needing to be replaced. We're going to be coming before your planning commission, not the planning commission, but your planning department and others to get support for traffic control. There will also probably be increased planned outages as a result of that, so that's one of the things that we're doing. We have three letter-writing campaigns going on right now, one of which is for the Tehachapi Renewable Transmission Project. That project was already approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, and we were in the process of building it. It's over 170 miles of new transmission that's going to be built, and the city of Chino Hills has requested the PUC to have three miles of that portion underground, and if they, if that actually goes forward, it will add $800 million to the project that's already $2 billion strong. So we have a campaign, a letter-writing campaign to the Public Utilities Commission that would allow us to actually build the project as they have already approved it. The second letter-writing campaign that we have moving forward is Assembly Bill 327, which is the residential rate reform bill. Through the thralls of the energy crisis, the first two tiers of the residential rates was actually, was actually frozen, which left the other three tiers of the residential rate to bear the burden of rate increases. So that is before the legislature, legislature right now. It actually has been approved out of the, out of the Assembly and is going up to the Senate probably this week. The third letter-writing campaign that we have moving forward is in support of our nuclear facility, SONGS. We're hopeful that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission will allow us to put one of the units back online at 70 percent so that it can provide much-needed energy for the summer as well as stability for the, for the infrastructure. Let me start this. Our summer readiness program is going on throughout the entire community, the entire service territory. Because we don't have SONGS, which actually delivers 22 megawatts of load not only to the South Orange County region, but it also stabilizes the energy grid, there is a summer readiness program that is moving forward throughout the course of our entire service territory to encourage community support for, during the summer. Our summer season starts at June the 1st, and what we're asking our agencies to do, as well as our community, is to engage in programs that we already have available for demand response, energy efficiency, so that during the course of the summer, we can actually shift our load and get through the summer without San Onofre. Just a real quick video here that highlights the importance of these SONGS, San Onofre Nuclear Facility. It should have sound. Nonetheless, what it's saying, though, is that because SONGS is not available, there are other, other facilities that have to go online in order to get that kind of energy onto the grid, and it would take a number of gas-fired plants as well as others to, to help us support that. It's kind of like the grid being like the grid on the highway. If the facility is down, it just means that what we're going to have to do is stop the way the energy is moving and actually have a detour. Some people think that because SONGS is not available, that we can actually get some other force, some other kind of energy on the grid that might be renewable, like wind or solar, but that's just not, it's just not the same as having baseload energy, which is something that we can call on 24 hours a day. Interestingly enough, we do have hydro from the Pacific Northwest and geothermal, we do have some solar, and we also have wind, but again, it's not, some, those, those energy sources are not 24 hours a day as is, as is our SONGS facility.
Lights on for more than 14 million people across Southern California. Every time you flip a light switch, you're accessing a complex network of towers, poles, wires, and power plants. However, not all power is equal. Sources of power generation differ in their reliability, their location, and their impact on the environment. Critical to that mix is the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station, or SONGS as it is often called, which is able to provide reliable, emission-free power 24 hours a day, seven days a week, regardless of the weather. Think of the electric grid like the freeway system in Southern California. When the grid is operating as it was designed, with SONGS in service, it operates like a day with minimal traffic, with transmission lines allowing electricity to move from power plants to customers.
Yeah, see, I think you've covered it better than this guy did.
I think I did.
Now, let's imagine there's a closure of a major piece of the freeway, and all of the other freeways get backed up and traffic is rerouted. With the electric grid, if a transmission line goes down or a power plant goes out, power has to be rerouted or sourced from somewhere else, leaving customers vulnerable to unexpected power outages. SONGS serves as a major on-ramp because it is strategically located in close proximity to heavily populated areas where electricity demand is greatest. It is a key resource to ensuring the lights stay on in Southern California. With San Onofre currently offline, we are keeping the lights on by rerouting electricity from alternate sources. However, this solution is not ideal or long-term. It puts grid reliability in a compromised state, offering only a narrow margin of reserve power. Some people have asked why we can't just replace San Onofre with other kinds of power. These scenarios are certainly possible, but each introduces significant challenges that could compromise our number-one priority, keeping the lights on for our customers. Let's take a look at the different options. Building new traditional power plants could provide the same 24/7 power San Onofre can, but these plants, such as natural gas, are not favored by customers and policymakers because of the air pollution they emit. Some have suggested that San Onofre can be replaced with customer-owned generation systems, like rooftop solar installations. However, these technologies are designed to be supplemental, as they are intermittent and require a reliable source of backup generation. Solar and wind power are not realistic options either. SONGS provides 2,200 megawatts of generating capacity. To replace the energy produced by San Onofre with solar or wind, it would take approximately 4,400 new windmills or 64,000 acres of new solar panels. While this particular route would not happen, imagine installing solar panels all the way from Los Angeles to Palm Springs. And neither wind or solar is capable of providing the same 24/7 reliable power that San Onofre can. Any new generation built to replace SONGS will likely require building new ways to capture and carry that electricity, which means new transmission lines. Building these transmission lines is no easy feat. It takes about 10 years to get the permits, plans, and construction completed, and, as experience has shown, it costs customers billions of dollars. Electricity powers modern life. You want it to work every time seamlessly. Our electrical network, a network that includes San Onofre, keeps the electricity flowing consistently whenever you need it. Clean, safe, affordable, reliable. For more than 125 years, Southern California Edison.
Thank you for your patience. The independent systems operator, which is CalISO, whose charge is to make sure that there's enough energy for the entire state, has already determined that we probably have enough energy to see us through the summer, and Edison does concur. However, because SONGS is offline, nonetheless, what I can be do, what I will do is go ahead and give the city some information with regard to what we're getting out to the rest of our customer base. You will see more things on commercials, if you will, with regard to giving your appliances the afternoon off. You'll be hearing from the state of California with regard to flexure power. And so, again, what I'd like to do is to ask the city to help partner and get the information out to our customers, no matter if they're small residential or large commercial, to engage in energy efficiency and demand response programs through the course of the summer so that we can get through the summer without, if you will, rotating outages. And it's something that we have to look at as a possibility, and back in the day when there was the energy crisis, information was on your bill with regard to the rotating outages and what that really means, and it's still there. But there's also information on the website, www.se.com, with regard to outages and how to get through them. These are some of the energy spots you might see again on commercials. But let's see it together, work together, and get through the summer.
Thank you very much. For those individuals who have questions of Nancy Jackson, you can contact her at Southern California Edison. This, the last two presentations are presentations only. We have a full agenda that we're going to move forward on. The city manager will be contacting Ms. Jackson on what, how the city can help. And in regard to Victor Valley College, Ginger Antiveros from the foundation, Catherine Abbott, for those individuals who heard that presentation, if you have any questions or comments, you can contact those individuals at the foundation of Victor Valley College. And thank you very much for the presentations. Mr. City Attorney, we came from closed session to this regular special meeting. Can you give a presentation on those items?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had agendized five closed-session items, two for the Airport Authority and three for the City Council. It was determined that there was no need to take action on Item A for the Airport Authority and Item C on the City Council agenda. We did, however, consider Items B, D, and E. With respect to Item D, and again, they, the items are all fully listed on the agenda. The subject matter of the closed sessions is also set forth thereon. With respect to Items B and E, which was a closed session, with respect to anticipated litigation based on written communications received from Mr. Landwear, there is a little bit of reportable action, and that is, Mr. Landwear had asked the city to cure and correct his perceived Brown Act violations. We have thoroughly researched Mr. Landwear's claims and have determined that there are no violations of the Brown Act, that the city has fully complied with the requirements of the Brown Act. In addition, Mr. Landwear has asserted that he believes city officials have interests in the properties selected for the proposed development of Victorville II Power Plant. None of these current city officials at this point had any interest in the property or have any interest in the property and actually were not, were not seated at the time that the proposed project was, was put online. In addition, our research has indicated that no former city officials have any interest in those properties. So the city direction with respect to Mr. Landwear's claims is that we, there is no need to cure any perceived Brown Act violation. With respect to the other item, there is no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. City Clerk, if you'll present your agenda, any comments and revisions at this time?
City Council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or on any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. There are two revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. They are on the dais for the council and are also available to the public. The first one is regards, in regard to Item Number Nine, it is a revised assignment of an amendment to license agreement. The second one is for Item Number 18, there is a revised staff report and a revised table of total cost per land use category. Those are all the revisions that I have tonight, Mayor Cox.
Thank you. Next item is that the individuals may approach the city council for their comments on items on the agenda or off the agenda. I have these cards that I will take in the order that I have received them. I have this right, I have four cards. First is Jerry Vincent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Jerry Vincent, and I am here tonight to reach out to the council members of Victorville in an effort to provide hope for the future health of your community. But first, I'd like to quickly introduce myself. I have been a resident of Apple Valley for 35 years. I have been employed by AT&amp;T as a communications technician for 40 years. Tonight, I am representing a worldwide humanitarian funding institution. Presently, I am serving as a volunteer leader to the H. Martin Foundation, Far East Humanitarian Services, and have been serving for over five years with an investment of well over 2,000 hours of my own personal time. The H. Martin Foundation is now reaching out to the mayors of Southern California with the intent of providing funding for the city's various programs and projects. with the intent of providing funding for the city's various programs and projects. The H. Martin Foundation will consider 100% funding for all existing projects with expectation of creating local jobs. These funds are privately owned and recognized by the highest monetary authorities and the U.S. government. These funds are not a grant, they are not a donation, and they are not a loan. These funds are—once your projects are funded, the H. Martin Foundation realizes extra involvement will be required and is ready to augment current salary and benefits for all mayors, council members, and project leaders in position. Eventually, the H. Martin Foundation would like to build in your area a community center as a model project. If it were to be located in Victorville, this project would be named H. Martin Global Community Center of Victorville. This community center would house the different nonprofit organizations and humanitarian agencies, which will create jobs and provide benefits for the people in the community. Primarily, the community center will provide services for families such as free childcare, before-and-after-school programs, complete scholarship programs, and a disaster relief program, which would include a community development network. All of these mentioned services provided by the H. Martin Foundation would beneficially encourage people to get off of welfare. In conclusion, I would like to supply a document to each council member that will briefly explain how we hope to collaborate with your city during the funding process and to help you better understand our plans.
10 seconds.
After each of you have reviewed the documents, if you're interested, I ask that you please notify me personally to initiate an appointment with our funding principal. My contact information is on the attached card. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Next speaker, Barbara Powers.
Good evening, council. I'm Barbara Powers from the Old Town Committee, and I want to give an update on what's happening in Old Town. I want you to be aware of the new businesses that are coming into town and what is changing. There are some very good things happening, and we want to ask for your support, both verbally and—there's things you will find out—I'm going to make—tell you the list. There's a wonderful restaurant downtown with Caribbean food, so I want to tell you about some of those things. The elite boxing has been moved. It is no longer on B. They have gone down to A Street. They're in the new—in the two-second-story building, and they are upstairs. They have done a marvelous job of renovating that place. It's just amazing. Coach Mario told me they have new belt that they—they're doing very well, the Athletic Committee. And they do offer children—children coming in and also workouts for that place. There's a Santa Fe Trading. They're going to put on a talent show, a craft show, on June 15th, and they are becoming very active. They are starting to maybe look at tours and things in the Old Town. He used to do that. Steve used to do that, but now he's looking at it again with his mother. The Barber College on A has reopened. It's under a new name. It's ABC School of Barbing—Barbering. And there's—the this is Santa Fe Trading, the same section. He has Travis Treasure Thrift. Now, it's on A Street. That's new. There's My Baked Buns, and this is Jennifer. She has the Caribbean food, which is just amazing, and we've had it, and it's Jamaican style. It's—she also bakes cakes. She's next to Guadalajara. It's just an amazing place, but—and she has purchased the place, so she says I'm not leaving. She's going to be in Old Town. The Needs and Wants is another thrift store. It's going to come in on June 1st. It's on B Street. It will have antiques and collectibles. All these are on Seventh now I'm talking about, Seventh Street Downtown. There's three thrift stores on—just off of C. There's the Get Your Thrift at Route 66. It's a clothing miscellaneous. There's a One Stop Thrift, which is brand-new. They just opened up, and it's furniture and other miscellaneous. There's Corner Street Thrift, and they are all three right together on C. Earl's Trophy Shop moved in on Sixth Street.
10 seconds, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. And I want to plug this catalog. I gave you the copy of this catalog last time. It's embarrassing to say, there's nothing in here. There's—I'll tell you quickly what's in here on Victorville. Harley-Davidson, Emma Jean's, Richie's.
Your time is going to be up very shortly, so you may—
A museum. But Sharon was going to be here tonight, but for to tell you about the new things for the museum, which are amazing, but she couldn't make it. She's over at the fair, so—thank you very much.
If you have additional information, you can forward that to the city clerk, and she'll make sure we get it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Hakim Majid.
It's a pleasure to speak to you today. I missed you guys. I've been in finals, trying to get—to keep that 4.0 grade point average. Go ahead, say something, baby. Well, we'll share it. One of the things I want to say is, we have an outstanding chief in our city, Chief Lucia. He is a man of his word, and he is a man of principle. He did everything he said he would do. He came to speak to the Community Services Advisory Committee, and he said he would, and he came. He brought some valuable information and about the process of what happens when law enforcement is called. And I just wanted you to know that he did an excellent job, and his team came out, did a good presentation, and that was something that I wanted to say, so hats off to you, Chief. You guys are doing a good job over there. Second thing I want everybody to know is, these Community Services Directory numbers, I don't know if everybody is aware of them, but they are excellent. They have all kind of numbers. It's helpful for everybody, from whatever you need. If it's graffiti removal, animal control, it's very important. I want everybody to know about that. The last thing is, I went to the—I think Dana called it the MRF, where the trash goes, and I had an amazing time there. I learned what actually goes in the blue recycle bin. Here's one of the little flyers that I think everybody should know about also. And the last thing I want to talk to you guys about is, I had a chance to briefly review the city plan from 2000—that's built for 2030. I know it was written by—in 2008, and I just briefly skimmed through it, and I wanted to know if there was anything on community services that was in there. If so, are we actively looking it up or reviewing it, putting different things in? Because it's a definitely an inspired plan. I could tell the people took a lot of time, effort, energy, with a diverse background, with interest, but I didn't see that much community services, recreation parks, I mean, land use, a few other things. But the next meeting, I want to talk to you guys about either amending that or maybe you could ask your Community Services Advisory Committee, for which I'm a member, to look at it on your behalf if you want, but that's going to be something that in the future I'm going to ask you guys to take a look at. Thank you, and again, good job, Chief. Thank you for coming and speaking to us and educating us. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Kermit Hayes. I hope I have this correct. Kermit Hayes. Do not see the individual coming forward. At this time, we'll move ahead with our city council agenda. We have no items at this time for the successor agency to the RDA. No items at this time for the Joint Powers Financing Authority Consent Calendar, Victorville Water District, Item Number 11. No. I'm sorry. Let me back up. Thank you. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Written Communications, Item Number Four.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as it relates to SCLA Agenda Items, Number Four, Five, Nine, and Ten are all related items, so if it makes it easy and more expedient for the board, you might want to consider all of those together.
I'm sorry, Four, Five, Nine, and Ten?
Four, Five, Nine, and Ten. And I can give you a real simple—or quick and easy briefing as to those items if you desire.
No questions, staff? Chair's open for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern.
That is two items, Four, Five, Nine, and Ten.
That was my understanding. The motion and the second was Four, Five, Nine, and Ten?
Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item numbers.
Mayor Cox, the Library Board of Trustees and the Southern California Rail Logistics Rail Authority agendas should be noted. Those have no items either for action.
No items at this time, thank you. Item Number Seven, Request to Ratify Entering into a Construction Contract with Scorpion Fire Protection, Four, Five, Nine, and Ten. Request to Ratify Entering into a Lease Agreement between the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, and SCLA A4, spaced SCLA to support aerial firefighting operations. Two, approve of additional appropriations in the amount of $8,916.92 for lease and utility revenues. And three, authorize the Assistant Executive Director to execute the lease agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item Number Seven, Request to Ratify Entering into a Construction Agreement with Scorpion Fire Protection in the amount not to exceed $40,500 for emergency fire suppression system modification, repairs, and certification of Building 731, and expect inspection, certification, and minor repairs to other various buildings, Project ES-13-071.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Number Eight, Request to Approve Amendment Number One to Construction Agreement with CPAC Engineering, Inc., in the amount of—in the amount not to exceed $118,450 for the installation of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and HVAC systems for Building 700, which is the air traffic control tower, 717B and 731.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
We had already—thanks to the city clerk, the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority had no items, and I had previously indicated that the successor agency and the JPA had no items. Next would be the consent calendar for Victorville Water District, which is Item Number 11.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Written Communications, Number 12, Request to Act the following Resolution Number VVD-13-004, a resolution of the Victorville Water District initiating proceedings to fix levy and collect standby charges for Water Improvement District Number One for fiscal year 2012-13.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
I probably should have asked if they could have been taken together. I believe they could have. I didn't do that, so. Resolution Number Victorville Water District-13-005, entitled a Resolution of the Victorville Water District Initiating Proceedings to Fix Levy and Collect Standby Charges for Water Improvement District Number Two for Fiscal Year 2012-13.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Under Written Communications, Item 13, Request to Approve the Professional Services Agreement with Larry Walken Associates for Water District Requirements Submitted to California Regional Water Quality Control Board, La Hantin Region, not to exceed $36,300. And two, Technical Support for the Preparation of an Industrial Pretreatment Ordinance, Pre-End Not to Exceed $20,000.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item 14, Request to Award Professional Services Contractor Ludwig Engineering Associates for the Started Wells Pipeline Project in the amount of $288,499. I have a question on this item. I know that this is to extend the water lines across the river to Eastrally to serve individuals. I had asked the staff if we were going to be serving individuals who had previously received water rights as a result of the water settlement agreement with Mojave Water Agency, and I'm not sure I got an answer, but I want the council, as a part of this, if we're going to be extending this in that area to serve existing customers, I will certainly all for this. If we're extending it in the area to serve new customers, then we should do it only on the condition that if they have obtained water rights, that they transfer those water rights to the city.
Mr. Mayor, you had indicated a question regarding that issue, and I don't know that the staff has completed the research on it. Perhaps Mr. McGlade could come up and address the nature of this pipeline.
Chairman, members of the board, the pipeline in question is to connect an isolated part of the Victor Valley Water District's system into the main infrastructure. Currently, that area is served by several wells which are aging. They pump into a storage tank and serves the relatively few customers on that side of the river. It's what I would term a somewhat of a fragile portion of the system. This will make it a lot more robust by being connected into the major infrastructure. That's the primary purpose. The alternative to that is to spend many hundreds of thousands of dollars on putting in new wells, and it would still leave that part of the system somewhat fragile.
Mr. McGlade, would this serve new customers?
It has that capability, certainly, but that's not the primary reason for doing it. But obviously, the system is designed such that it can be expanded to serve future customers.
If we had a future customer who had retained water rights from the adjudication back 20 years ago, as Mr. Cox is concerned about, is that something we could negotiate at that time? Or is it something that the council needs to take an action on tonight to ensure that that occurs?
I'm not sure that I know the answer to that. That's maybe something that we would have to have the city attorney look into, what rights that the district would have as far as asking for what otherwise were production rights under the adjudication, if that individual then needed service from the city. I could see what that is, a fair argument, in that this—the city or the district has the requirement to pay for any over-pumping over their free production allowance.
I—the reason that I ask that question, I think that it would be fair for the city council to adopt a policy, whether it's rebuilding the existing system or extending it for those individuals who have obtained a water right, and now the city would start providing that water. We, our current customers, would have to pay for additional water, and it is possible that those individuals would be left with a water right that they could then sell, and then you and I and all the other customers in the system would have to raise the rates in order to buy additional water, and that is not fair. So I think that as a policy of the council—if this is a separate item, but I'd ask that we agendize that, and where we are extending our system into areas to serve properties that have water rights, that are conditioned that as they transfer the right to the Victorville Water District.
I'll second that.
I will do that as a motion, then, so. Thank you.
Is the motion then to require that new customers then relinquish their rights in order to get their service?
Well, it's certainly—I think it's a policy of the council, and this is going to require the attorney to look at that. the attorney to look at that, but in this particular case here, I think it's a condition of approval for an item number 14, and that as a policy matter for all future, that if that is the case, that they'd be brought back to the council for, I guess Doug would be the individual that would bring that back to the council for direction on how the City Council may want to negotiate that agreement. We have a motion and a second.
The motion, then, as I understand it, is just to approve the item as currently set forth on the agenda?
Yes.
With the condition?
Yeah, with the condition, that if anybody taken the service as a result of the construction have water rights, that they transfer those water rights to the Water District.
Item number 14 is a professional services contract with Ludwig Engineering.
I know, but I'm not going to spend, I don't want to spend $288,000 and have all the professional engineering done and move forward, and then find at that point that we have no policy on the serving of the water or taking the water. I think it has to be tied right up front.
How about if I?
Because if the people you're going to serve aren't willing to do that, we don't need to spend $288,000 for professional services.
How about if I withdraw my motion?
Okay.
And make a new motion to continue this item until we get more information on what we can do in that respect?
I think that would be appropriate. I'd be concerned that there may be an unequal protection argument by customers that don't have water rights versus those that do that have to then relinquish them. I mean, I think we should just look into that issue.
Could we potentially bring this back, as well as the policy that Mayor Cox is asking for at the same time?
Objection. The council, then, this item will be continued to?
Not next Tuesday.
I think we could probably get an answer on those issues.
June 18th?
June 18th?
June 18th would be better, yes.
Yeah. There's no way it's going to happen before next Tuesday.
Okay.
That agenda is being finalized tomorrow.
Yep. June 18th sounds appropriate, then. Thank you. Item number 50, request to approve an additional appropriation of $294,012 from the Victorville Water District for the Victor Valley Water District and the Baldi Mesa Water District, CalPERS required employer contributions. Is that the old Baldi Mesa Water District, Doug?
It's both of the old districts, yes. Their employees became city employees, oh, it's been, I think, five years ago now, and their remaining obligations to PERS have been sitting there, and at this point, PERS has demanded payment, apparently.
Is this an amount in full, or is this just a payment?
I believe that this will close out those books, as far as I understand it.
Was this item budgeted?
This was not a budgeted item, no.
So it's an additional appropriation?
Yes, sir.
And it says that, but I wanted to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing here, because this is important, that we get these items closed out. I think everyone is reading about our unfunded liabilities. Thank you.
I just have a question regarding it being unbudgeted. The letter from CalPERS states it was sent on October 2011, so that was approximately eight, two months ago. So my question is, is why wasn't this budgeted?
Actually, when we took over those districts, the way that we transitioned those employees in, we didn't believe that there was anything remaining due and payable. There's been a lot of negotiations back and forth, and PERS is not the quickest negotiator, as I'll say. Other than that, I don't have an answer as to exactly when staff determined that this was an item that did still require payment.
Okay, now, are we booking the liability, or are we funding it totally?
We're funding it totally.
No further questions? Chairs open for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckren. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Victorville Housing Trust, there's no items for posting at this time. City Council Consent Calendar. Approval of the Consent Calendar, items 16s, A through F.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckren. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Mayor Cox, on Agenda Item Number 17, I'm going to abstain, as I have in the past, as Cooley Construction is a client of my firm.
Okay, are there any additional comments? Agenda Item Number 17 is a request to, 1, accept the bid withdrawal from Vance Corporation, and 2, award the construction contractor Cooley Construction, Inc., in the amount of $559,814.67 for Victor Valley Center Drive Phase 2, that's the Marine Drive to Seventh Street. Staff, any further comments on this?
Just available for questions, Mr. Mayor.
Questions, if not, for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckren and Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Agenda Item Number 18, requested up Resolution Number 13-012, entitled a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, setting the time date in place for a public hearing pursuant to Proposition 218, on the proposed formation of a citywide assessment district under the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, for the perpetual maintenance of street lighting, safety lighting, and traffic signal lighting systems and facilities called citywide street lighting assessment districts per end, citywide SLAD, end per end, and approving the proposed district's engineering report. Questions to staff? Questions? Chairs open for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckren. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Agenda Item 19, request to approve the proposed council policy CP-13-01, City Victorville
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Agenda Item Number 20, request to approve the proposed council policy CP-13-02, City Name Badges for Planning Commissioners and Advisory Committee Members.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
By the way, just so everyone knows, I still have my name badge from when I was planning commissioner. So this policy that we're adopting, for whatever reason, actually occurred in the past. I'll bring it if you want to see it.
Maybe you'd.
I don't know. I remember Mayor Rothschild implementing that sometime in the past, when we were on the planning commission.
Agenda Item 21, request to approve the bus stop shelter advertising pilot program and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $30,000. Who owns the bus shelters? Does the city, does the city own those, or does the authority own those?
You know, that was part of the reason why this took quite a while to come back to the council, and actually, I'll ask Mr. McGlade to come up and address that issue and how we finally got that resolved. I know you live hearing for Mr. McGlade, and we like watching him walk down the aisle, not a simple yes or no.
Mr. McGlade, you ought to sit on the front row.
It's complicated.
Do we own them, do we not own them?
It's pretty simple.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have 15 bus shelters that the city owns, and there are 46 that are owned by VVTA. They are leased to the city for the purposes of being able to utilize them for advertising, basically. So that means that the city has a responsibility for some 61 bus shelters in the maintenance program, which the, if the bus shelter advertising program is successful, will generate revenues that will assist in that maintenance effort.
Question of the city manager, if we raise, if the City of Victorville raises $30,000 as a result of this program, are there any restrictions, or is it just a gentleman's agreement that the $30,000 will go back to offset the cost of maintaining these shelters?
I don't know that there's any restrictions at all, but that's the intended purpose of it.
Just wanted in the minutes that it is the intended purpose.
I agree.
No further questions? Mr. McGlade, have a motion, please.
It was slightly more complicated than yes or no. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckren. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Next item, item number 22, request to approve Councilmember Garcia's appointment to the Planning Commission, Robert Kirth.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Welcome to the city family again.
Thank you very much.
Item 23, request for council to consider adopting an ordinance addressing the problem of abandoned shopping carts.
Oh, I actually just wanted a presentation of, like, what it all entails. I mean, I don't want to go jump right to a policy yet.
All right. I know that we have a lot of calls in regard to those shopping carts. We find them at the end of Old Town, down on the extension of Sixth Street. We find them all over, actually. So I know it's a problem. I do see people picking those up, but I don't know what the agreements are, so I think it would be good for the council. Thank you, Vias. I think it would be good for the council to be updated on that.
That would be our preference, is to update the council on what policies we have in place, what contracts we have in place, and then seek direction if you'd like something further. I know based on some of the complaints that we heard at the last meeting, staff reached out to our contract service provider to clean up the wash behind the mall and some other areas.
And I know that this issue, I looked to Rob Kirth, who was on the planning commission with me at the time. This issue is not new. It's been around for a decade or more, and I think that the planning commission would be an appropriate authority to discuss this as well, especially with respect to new projects coming online. With respect to existing projects, I think that's where the city council has to come in, but new projects coming online, there's definitely an ability to address those issues before they're built, and make sure that there's regulations in place to cause them, to make sure, you know, that the shopping cart issues don't get out of hand.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. Next up, would the council think it would be a fair request, then, when this matter is submitted to the city council, that if there are any other outstanding issues that the planning commission could be involved in, that they either attend the council meeting for the presentation, or there'd be a joint meeting? Planning commissioners have requested that the council work with them and give them duties and responsibilities. They'd be more than happy to help us out on some of these issues, and so.
Maybe we could just kick it back to them altogether, and then let them deal with it and bring it to us if it needs further.
I think that's a great idea.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Rob, we just gave you a new assignment. First day on the job.
That's what happens. Thank you. Discussion on possible action regarding the, regarding items for the upcoming City Council agenda?
I had some complaints about Victorville towing, and I'm going to wait until I get more information on that from our city manager.
I have none.
I have a lot of questions about the budgets, but I know we're going to have at least two meetings on that. Doug would like one, I know, but.
No, we would like to. We'll have a budget workshop, and then a budget adoption meeting. So we're working on the schedule for that now. We had hoped to have the workshop on the 4th. Right now, I'll just say that we're still polishing the budget. It is very close to being ready to be presented, but it will not be on the 4th. So we'll be working with you very closely over the next few weeks to get those scheduled.
Very good. Other items, council members? Item number 25, report from staff and our council members. Staff, Doug, we'll start with you.
I have no reports tonight.
No reports. Gloria, Chris?
I just want to point out an article in the Press Enterprise over the weekend, talking about Sandbag and over $2 billion in infrastructure projects that'll be under construction in the next year in the entire county of San Bernardino. Quite an undertaking, but as you're driving on the freeways out there, be safe, slow down, look out for those construction
None at this time?
I don't have any items at this time. I just wanted to comment that there were a lot of activities through the Victor Valley in regard to what I still call Memorial Day's Declaration Day. We had a wonderful ceremony at Victor Valley Memorial Park. A little disappointed that so many people put so much effort into that, and somehow, I guess, I guess, there were so many activities going on that the Daily Press didn't find the room for that, but it was a great event, and I want to personally thank all the people, the organizations, the military organizations that were involved in that, and it made the city proud. That's all that I have. Any comments from staff, city clerk, city attorney? This meeting is adjourned.